Okay. All right, I call this meeting at the Prosper Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been newly called, and the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 5, 5.1. Mays, would you please lead us to invocation?
I would love to. Heavenly Father, we are just so thankful for your sovereignty over all that goes on in this district, Father, that we can rest and knowing that you are in control and you desire our good. Father, as we get to the end of this week and get to the holiday offer for all of us, Father, we just pray specifically for our teachers, Lord, that they would have a good rest and recuperation after all they've gone through the last many months in this virtual teaching environment, Father, and the difficulty that all that comes with it. And, Lord, they've just done such an amazing job with our students and with our families. And, Father, we are just so thankful for that and do not take that for granted. And we thank you so much for the blessings that we've had in this district, that we've got computers for our kids and internet access and all of that. Father, we continue to pray for our health and safety. And, Lord, as we go on this break and we know families will be traveling, we pray for edge of protection around them. And we pray for this meeting, Lord, that you would give us wisdom and discernment. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Let me just put the flag of the United States of America to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I believe we have a representative State Board of Education with us as well. So it's a very exciting time, and Stephen was so kind, he's such a fabulous student. I recognized him on my weekly video. And of course, the young man that he is, he emails me to thank me for recognizing him for doing good. So I was like, now, this is a kid who deserves like a really big award because those kids don't do that. And so, Stephen, I just want to let you know how very proud we are of you. And I know that this little has some fabulous things to say about you. I keep relating to be here tonight to do this. This is the resolution that was passed in our State Board meeting in September. Whereas Stephen Phillips, a junior at Prosper High School and Prosper ISD, uses engineering talent to produce central medical equipment during the height of the pandemic using his 3D printer, crafting reusable solid plastic shields, including base mask with adjustable clips, and delivering them to healthcare professionals and medical facilities. I have a plaque here for you, Stephen. The State Board of Education congratulates Stephen Phillips as the winner of the 2020 Student Hero Award for District 12 for outstanding acts of kindness, charity, and selfless service towards others. Congratulations, Stephen.
You guys ready? I still got you.
Congratulations. We're looking forward to great things from you. Yes, and thank you for representing.
Email to receive.
What a fabulous way to start a meeting. Congratulations. Okay, public comment, open forum. We have two people signed up. Let me just read the, uh... Read this blurb here. I'll try to find out where I want to pick up. "The Board encourages public comment. All public comments at a regularly scheduled meeting should be limited to school district governance and operations. All public comments at a meeting other than a regularly scheduled meeting should be limited to agenda items posted for the meeting. All speakers will be limited to three minutes, and a total of 30 minutes has been allocated for public comment," which we shouldn't need if we have two speakers. "If you have a specific concern related to an employee of the district or a specific student issue, you are encouraged to utilize the district's grievance procedures provided in Board Policies DGBA Local, FNG Local, and GF Local or applicable grievance process. Finally, remember that the Board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are not properly posted on the agenda. You may choose to address comments made related to an agenda item at the time the agenda item is discussed in the meeting. The Board of Trustees appreciates your active participation in the school district." So, start with Pat Cochran. There he is. Can you please introduce yourself? Tell us where your address, and go.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. Pat Cochran. My address is 741 Salt Lake Court, Prosper, Texas 75078. Back again for a third time. Want to make sure that you haven't forgotten us, the ones who also advocate for informed consent, medical freedom of choice. I came here prepared to speak in a different manner, until I was informed by Dr. Bradbury that there's a different policy now, who wasn't even aware that there's an exemption policy in GA 29. This is a problem when people and staff make policies that don't adhere even to executive orders, regardless of the legality of those executive orders, and those policies are not informed by these executive orders themselves. And we can talk about the science all day. You can bring your 10 best scientific studies and I'll bring mine. We'll see what holds up. Any medical intervention that you mandate to be practiced that requires somebody else to do something is junk, is absolute crap. And to say that I have to stand outside because I'm a risk to everybody else when I haven't been sick, my family hasn't been sick, I go to work and don't wear a mask, is absolute crap. I served this country for 12 years. I was on the Osama Bin Laden raid. I have a disability rating from the V-8. I do not have to comply. And it makes me furious when I get told by an administrator of this district that I have to stand outside, that I have to be ostracized because I won't stand to your policy that is not even essentially legal and allow for medical exemptions. This is the level insanity we have come to. That's all I got.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Thank you, Mr. Cochran. Lacey Wheeler.
Hello, my name is Lacey Wheeler. I live at 416 Smokebrush. I am reading a letter on behalf of my daughter. She's in sixth grade, goes to Reynolds Middle School. Dear Prosper ISD parents and board members, my name is Faith Wheeler, and I'm in sixth grade at Reynolds Middle School. In writing this letter, I hope to share some of the challenges I've had to endure because of the mask mandate. On my first week of school, I was made fun of for wearing a face shield instead of a mask. I felt singled out and unliked because I was different from the rest. On the second week of school, I finally got to see my violin. I had waited so long to play it. The orchestra teacher mistakenly told me that I wouldn't be able to play violin unless I switched to a mask. Last November, I got really sick and got double pneumonia, which weakened my lungs, so a mask is not an option for me. I was afraid I wouldn't be able to play in orchestra. Luckily, my parents talked to the teacher and principal since face shields are allowed. I now play violin and enjoy it a lot. For both of my concerts, I've had to wear a mask under my chin, which I believe is just as effective, if not more effective, than the cloth ones children are being forced to wear. I do not think it's fair that we're being forced to follow this mandate. I think that parents should be able to choose what they think is best for their kids. By forcing us to wear a mask, you are taking away our smiles. You're taking away from our parents' option to choose what is best for their family. When will this end? Can we at least do No Mask Monday or Free the Face Friday? I do not accept this as our new normal, and my friends don't either, and many kids at school. We want our faces back. We want our American rights back. Thank you. Faith Wheeler. She would be here, but she has something she has to do. And after being forced to stand outside, I'm kind of glad my 11-year-old didn't have to stand outside in the cold.
Thank you, Ms. Wheeler. Appreciate your comments. Okay, that is the end of our open forum. Let's move into the consent agenda.
Okay. So, um, I recommend that you, I'm assuming all of you reviewed the minutes from the prior meeting from November 16th, and recommend that you approve those minutes as read.
Yeah, let's get all of that. Let's do A, B, and C. Can we do A, B, C, and D all together, and then we'll just approve the consent agenda?
Sure.
Let's do that.
Okay, the next one we have for 5B is it's an update on the requested waivers for Prosper ISD. You all took action, a one-time action for approval of waivers on October 19th in that meeting, but I wanted to, in full transparency, Baker and Boyer, fourth grade, are our two... Three, excuse me, classrooms who are in need of waivers with the 22 to 1 rule. Any questions?
I have a question. Are all the students affected by the waiver situation? Are they all attending school?
Yes, they're in person.
They're all in class?
Because you did a pretty big group of waivers, because we had to do waivers for virtual classrooms also, and that was back, I believe, in the September meeting.
So these are just the ads?
Yes. Because as we have students returning to in-person, the numbers are starting to move in the classrooms. And then our attendance, we are on track, and we're about 2,100 kids difference from last year to this time, so 19,265. And then we have our construction update. Mr. Dave Lasco, do you want to take them on a trip to either Auburn Hills or to the west side of the district? So this is Mike and Janie Reeves Elementary located in the Auburn Hills subdivision. This is the one that we had the shortened timeline on. We are on schedule to open in August of '21, but they are working around the clock to make sure that that happens. And this again will relieve Baker Elementary.
Will it be ready when?
August 21. Don't you worry, Mr. Branches. Ho Construction has assured me it will be ready. It is, it's hard to believe, but it's unbelievable what they do, just like what they did with Hughes. I think we had a shortened timeline on that project as well, started in October, and sure enough, by August of that year, we had a building open for students. So Bryant Elementary that will relieve Windsong Elementary on the west side of the district. This one, obviously, timeline's a little bit different, so they are moving along. We have walls up. It's all good. And Dr. Bradley, we will have a tornado shelter in this one?
Yes.
Okay. And we've not previously had that, correct, in a Prosper, town of Prosper building? So this will be our first one?
What's that? Is that an extra $2 million or $1 million? Something like that?
A million, at the elementary level.
At the elementary level. Okay. Any questions or comments on the construction update?
Okay.
Okay.
So really, the only thing that, it's the minutes that we need you all to take action on because the others are information, and then the waiver has been previously approved.
So, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, Deborah, second? Anybody? Okay, Jan, all in favor? Okay, there we go.
Okay, very good. We have, actually, Mrs. Biggs, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, is going to do student outcomes and talk about curriculum instruction in Prosper ISD.
Thank you, Dr. Ferguson, members of the Board. I'm excited to be here and excited to talk to you. In a normal year, this is not a normal year, I'd be sharing some STAR scores with you. But this is kind of a beautiful moment, because this is going to give us an opportunity to talk about how we know our kids are learning outside of standardized test scores. So as I said, STAR is kind of, that's what the state seems to be primarily about. Prosper, as you know, we're members of a group called, we refer to it as T-PAC, the Texas Public Accountability Consortium. And we believe that no one is better able to tell the story about our children and how they're learning but the community. We know the entire story. So I want to take you through the entire story briefly. So these two questions are really what's going to frame what we're going to talk about tonight. How do we know outside of standardized tests that our kids are learning? And what do we do as a district to ensure students are learning? So what we do is, we understand that a student's education is a learning pathway that starts in pre-K or kindergarten and moves all the way through 12th grade, and that every teacher is part of that learning continuum. So we build upon each other's learning. And one of the ways that we do that is we use a backward design curriculum framework. And what, really quickly, what this is, is we decide, what is the goal? What do we want our students to learn? Then before we decide how we're going to get them to learn those things, we say, what is the evidence of this learning? What will tell us that our kids are where we need them to be? Then we move into stage three, which would be the learning plan. So this is an example, Unit 3, this is third grade, of Unit Government and Patriotism. And you'll see that we ask them provocative questions to get them into the learning and to drive them to the essential understandings, and those are all grounded in the state standards. And what this does is, of course, is it aligns with our strategic plan. So we go right into 1.1 in Innovative Learning. We make sure that the learning experiences the kids have are moving their thinking forward, not just regurgitation of facts. Tied to this, of course, are our authentic assessments. So STAR is one data point, multiple choice. And there's a place for multiple choice tests, which really, that's just knowing if the kids know their basic facts, their basic understandings. What we want to do is, we want to put the kids in situations where they... They're participating in performance tasks where they become a scientist. They think like a scientist. They become a historian. They think like a historian. So what we're looking for when we say, are our children learning? We want to hear them speak in the language of the discipline. We want to hear them speaking like scientists, like mathematicians, like historians, like artists, like musicians. We want them to be that experience. We're also looking to grow their habits of mind. And habits of mind are things like critical thinking skills, problem-solving skills, the ability to collaborate. And that's something that educators can see and parents can see when they visit the classroom, but these are not things that are going to show up on a STAR exam. Similarly, transdisciplinary skills have a crossover with habits of mind. But the transdisciplinary skills can also go to the soft skills, the types of things that will transcend the classroom that you'll see in the real world that will leave one specific subject area and cross over. So when the learning becomes alive and it leaves the classroom and we see it applied, whether it is at home or it's happening in that same grade level, or it's transcending and taking place once they leave us. But that's when we know real learning is happening. It's not just about the test. So here's an example of the difference between disciplinary outcomes and transdisciplinary outcomes. So there's no doubt we want our kids to be effective writers, to reason mathematically, and to be creative when they're doing their artistic endeavors. But what we're really looking for are them to, we want our kids to be critical thinkers, collaborators, and self-directed learners. So what we understand in Prosper's educators is the curriculum content is really the vehicle to the competencies that students will learn, no matter what they do after they leave us, whether it's going to university, whether it's going to a profession, whether it's going to the military. We know that content is actually growing that cognition and opening doors for our students so they can do whatever they choose to do. So how does all of this happen? It's meaningful learning experiences over time. It doesn't happen in isolation. It's really important that their, that this, their learning's vertically aligned and horizontally aligned. So how do we ensure that's happening? We have professional learning communities, which we refer to as PLCs. And probably, I'm just going to assume, probably when y'all were in school, when teachers had planning time, it was, hey, I'm going to bring the coffee. You mimeograph or make Xerox, mimeograph, that shows all the... Mimeograph the lessons, and just kind of, it became like a task thing. You do this, you do this, you do this. That's not what's happening in our professional learning communities. We're talking about the kids. We're talking about learning. And this ties into the second part of our strategic plan under Innovative Learning, where we bring educators together to collaborate and work together to make sure we're doing the best we can for our students. So these are the questions that really drive our professional learning communities. And when you look at these, what I really want you to pay attention to is the fact that the students are at the center of every single one of these questions. And the way we educate our kids and build education and prosper is we keep the students at the center of the learning. So what do we expect our students to learn goes back to stage one. What are the learning goals of our kids? How will we know they're learning? That's stage two. What evidence are we going to accept that we know this is happening with our students? How will we respond when they don't learn, and how will we respond if they already know it? There's stage three. Those are the meaningful learning experiences over time. That's where we say, hey, listen, just to make an analogy, the whole class is going to Disneyland. We all know what the goal is. But we know that some of our kids may get there by a rocket ship. Some may get there by an airplane. Some kids may get there by a train. Some kids may get there on a bicycle. But we know the learning experiences we create are going to ensure all of our kids get to the same destination, whatever their academic needs are. So how do we know students are learning? When we look at our students, we want to see meaningful engagement with our kids. And it's not engagement that's just high interest. We want to make sure that there's learning is the center of that meaningful engagement. So it's high interest, but it goes to growing their learning. We want our students to own their learning, so we try to do that by giving student choice wherever possible. And we want our kids to be curious about their learning and to be engaged in their learning. Habits of mind and transdisciplinary skills, I mentioned that earlier, that's something that we can see, and we can actually see develop from pre-K all the way forward. They become more sophisticated as they acquire these skills. And once again, language of the discipline, can the students speak as if they are scientists, if they are historians, if they are, as if they are mathematicians, because that's what we're asking them to do, take that knowledge and actually use it, apply it. So just knowing the facts and working through a math worksheet, that just tells you the kids know how to work through a math worksheet. But if they say, oh, I understand, mathematical reason helps me make decisions in life. I understand the analytical thinking behind it. I understand that if I'm not careful with my equations and I build a bridge, that bill's not going to, that bridge won't stand. That's where we want to get our kids. And also, and I'm pretty passionate about this one, is that the students understand and they can articulate, why am I even learning this? And, um, and the truth is, the kids will take classes that they, they may feel they'll never use again. I remember being in school and having to learn about how to figure out the circumference of a juice can and thinking, why am I ever going to need to know this? But what I'd like the kids to know is that that type of thinking, it's like operating, updating your operating system in your phone. All of your software runs more quickly when everything, when you have better skills, and that's what we're doing here. So no, we might not all be mathematicians, but that critical thinking is going to come into play when you make decisions about what house I'm going to buy, when you make decisions about what loan I'm going to sign up for. So all of this comes together, and it marries beautifully with the graduate profile. So if you look at the graduate profile and the academic readiness, the well-roundedness, the respect for others, the opportunities and challenges in the community and involvement, you can see all of that's intentional in our curriculum. And, um, what I also want you to know, and we didn't talk about, I didn't talk about it at length, is the state's getting ready to ask us to do character development formally in our curriculum. And the team has started looking at what that needs to be. And I'm really pleased to say that almost everything that the state is asking us to do is already in the curriculum. It's just a matter of highlighting and elevating that. So Prosper is ahead of the game in so many ways, and that's just one example of how. So that's it. And do you have any questions?
Very good.
Questions for anybody? This is what we're all about up here, right?
Yes, and the great thing is, is our curriculum is written truly by our teachers. So it's not purchased from somewhere afar and then brought into Prosper. This is actually designed and continually worked on with our curriculum designers as well as our teachers in Prosper, because they know our Prosper kids best.
Right. And one of the reasons that we're able to attract the best of the best out there is because our curriculum is not scripted. We honor the autonomy of the teacher, and it's the collaboration between the district and the teachers that make this so beautiful. And I do want to say one thing. I want to brag on the teams that I work with, and Patrick O'Neill's team, they do a lot of work together in these PLCs. And I have to tell you, I want you to know that there was a story that came out about Garland, and they had like a super sub-day, and they were celebrating that, and good for Garland. But people were doing that all the time in Prosper, all the time. Teams are filling in for teachers that are in quarantine. They're coming in and co-teaching teaching classes. And this is only my second year in Prosper, but it's remarkable how fabulous the staff is and how much they support one another. And there's no doubt that this is a family that really cares about what goes on here. So I'm, I'm really honored to be here and to be able to work with these teams.
Wonderful. Wonderful. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Biggs. I'm still scrolling through the schools. Lots of pictures. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Lots of pictures. Let's move this along. Okay. So we need to look at the consideration and possible approval of innovative courses. Mr. Shirley and his team have put together that list of courses. The innovative courses are the ones that TEA asked us to take action on, and we need board approval on. And then we've also included the list of courses that would just be, classes that we're adding into the course selection. So you can see right here on your screen are the innovative courses that we need actual board approval on. So adding that Principles of Biomedical Aerospace Engineering Coding App Creator. And then you can see the new state approved. So these are already on the TEA approval list, but we will be adding those in as additional course offerings for our students.
It's amazing stuff.
I will say that the Superintendent Advisory Council, one of the students has not grown up here, and she said, I am amazed at all of the choices I have and the things that I can take. So thank you all as a Board for your support of all of these great courses and offerings that our kids get the opportunity to be a part of.
Are we having to bring in anybody especially to just teach these courses? Or are these already taught by?
No, actually, we're, I mean, obviously, we go after and hire, and we were talking about that today. We try to cast our net pretty early for the high demand, hard-to-fill areas. But I'll say that Mrs. Gassman has done a great job, because loathe our languages other than English courses. Those become extremely challenging. But she's done a great job of getting our online courses set up, so then that way, we have those provided at the campus level, whether it's Chinese or Latin or German, and the students actually go in, but they're fully instructed online, but we have an adult in there to supervise. So that has been a huge win, and she's done a phenomenal job making sure that we can offer those things, because we've had parents asking for years, what about other languages? And she found a way.
Thank you.
She's out here somewhere. Do you see people in masks on? Didn't she hear someone?
No, not here tonight. I bet she's watching.
Okay, well, we need a, that's an action item to approve. Consider and approve the innovative courses for 2021, 2022.
Make a motion for approval.
Thank you, May. He's got a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Bill. All in favor? Okay, very good.
Okay. One of the things I want to... One of the things I want to point out, because you may get a question about this also, is the Mexican-American Studies is a course that TEA is asking us to implement, and that will actually come online in Prosper in the year 2022, 2023. So in case you do get questions about that.
Great.
Okay. All right, let's move on then to looking at our instructional material purchases. And this is actually for Reeves Elementary and Bryant Elementary. So these are all of the state-adopted materials. And what we're looking at that needs to be purchased, you can see the grand totals down there. Again, just a reminder that we do receive instructional material allotment from the state in order to, to take care of some of this expenditure. Any questions about that?
Really? It is what it is. Have you ever had a chance to look at this in our packets? Uh, okay, so we're on, that's C, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So need a motion on, uh, 6C?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Beavers.
Second.
Thank you, Jana. All in favor? Okay, great.
And then also consideration and possible action on the purchase, purchase of additional materials for our existing schools. The good thing with a lot of the materials that are coming from the state are software that can be updated, but obviously, there's always an expense because when you buy a new license for a student, and obviously, we're adding in a lot of students, you have to purchase that license for that student to have access. So this is looking at those instructional materials for our existing schools with growth across the district. So we're seeking approval for $300,000 for additional materials for the 18 schools that we currently have.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you, Jana.
I'll second.
Thank you, Deborah. All in favor? Okay, that's good. Is it 1.2 million? You keeping a running total? I think.
I think you're close.
I didn't take, I didn't take Algebra III Differential Equations in, uh, high school.
We can help you with that.
Calculus III Differential Equations.
All right, we have Ms. Fulmer and Ms. Sees, who are going to present our financial investment report and tax report.
Thank you, Dr. Ferguson. Mr. Bridges and Board of Trustees, we're going to do a little tag team tonight. I'm going to present the investment report for the fiscal year through November 30th, and then Michelle Sees is going to do the financial report for you tonight. So if we look at our investment portfolio through November 30th, that's the first quarter of the year that we've gone through. We're going to read right to left on this one. Our benchmark performance is really the weighted average yield of our entire portfolio of all the investments is a .17 of 1%. So it's, it's very low, it's almost zero. But that's because we do invest in securities that are very, very low risk. So we've got .17, the 30-day Treasury and the one-year Treasury, the one-year is actually ticking downwards slightly. So I don't see this coming back up anytime soon. But that would be great because investment earnings are one way that we supplement the general operating, um, the debt service, and the bond proceeds as well. And so those are important as well. Our overall market value of the total portfolio is $190 million, and the general operating fund is $119 million of that total. Going to the next page, if we look at our total investments for all funds prior year at this time, which is November 30th, $222 million. So we're at 190 now. Percent decrease of that would be 14.3%. Those are going to be your bond proceeds that are going to be ebbing and flowing on that one. Oh, I want to go back a little bit. I want to point out on this one that the Lone Star Investment Pool, so we've been really trying to diversify and get the pie chart to be very equal because diversity in, in that, there is some safety as well. Lone Star is .08, that's really, really low. And so one thing we did is the Texas Term Investment Pool, while it's not the highest, we did move 20 million into Texas term right at December 2nd. And so on the next one, you're going to see a little bit less in Tex Pool Lone Star, and that's good. We're just trying to shift a little bit more to grab a tiny bit of yield where we can. If we look at the investment comparison by funds, um, last year to this year at this time, you can definitely see where the shift in that, the bond proceeds are 50 million, where they were at 99 million this time last year. And campus activity funds, a surprisingly high amount. I know it's a small amount on the chart, but over $1.8 million in campus activity funds. So last year at this time, 102,119 percent increase of that is 16%. So that concludes the investment portion of this, and then I will turn this over to Michelle Sees.
Any questions for Ms. Fulmer?
No.
Okay.
Good evening. So we have our general operating revenue for 2021 as of November 30th. We have $44.1 million compared to 1920 of $29.9 million. So that's a 47.2% increase. You can see that we're more reliant on state funding this year compared to last year, and that's due to House Bill 3 and tax rate compression that Ms. Fulmer's talked about in previous meetings. Um, our local, our tax revenue is a little bit lower because of COVID, which we've talked to them about. They're not overly concerned, and they're seeing deposits coming in more. Uh, we did, we did, like I said, talk to them a little bit about that. The next slide shows the revenue compared to the, the budgeted revenue, so the 44.1 million compared to the 178.2% of budgeted revenue. Uh, so we have completed 24.8% of that this year compared to 19.8% of that last year. So you see the pie charts, and that's the percentage of actuals. So you do see the bigger piece of the pie for this year for state, and you can see the, the local reflecting the same way that we talked about in the previous slide. The next slide is the total tax collections. We've collected $3 million this year compared to 4 million last year. This is through October. This is the tax, the Collin County Tax Report that we talk about every month. Uh, we have collected 1.94% of the original levy this year compared to 2.19% last year. Uh, like I said, we did speak with them, the tax statements went out late because of COVID. Everybody's in the same situation.
Will that impact collections to us? Is that going to impact our budget?
Delaying anything? What do we think?
We don't think so at this point.
Just a timing difference. The tax office said that they, they were mailed a week later than prior year.
Oh, just a week?
So, yes. And so they were, that just put it right at the end of November, so those were going to be coming in in December.
Still, still due at the end of January, right? Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So the next slide is the tax rollback. Um, so there is like a 74.1% decrease this year, so we've had minimal. We've only collected 101,000 compared to 392,000. Um, this is just a natural process of farmland turning to residential or commercial, and you have seen a lot of revenue from that in this area. Uh, but it's not something we can depend on, and it's not, not really something we know when it's going to happen. But you probably still will see some of that in this area.
Good.
Uh, the next slide is expenditure by major object. And this is, we have collected, or we have expense, I'm sorry, 51.8 million compared to 43 million last year, which is a 20.4% increase. Um, this is a natural response to the growth. It matches the increase in, in the budget that you've, you've opened three new schools, and you've hired over 400 staff members. So all the other expenditures follow, follow that. The next slide is compared, the 51.8 million compared to the budgeted expenditures of 192.4. Uh, we're at 26.9% complete compared to the budget and 27.1 last year. So the pie charts at the bottom are actuals. So the one to the left is November 30th of 2019 compared to the one to the right of this year. So you might notice a few things there, travel and other costs. That's a little different, but, uh, other costs encompasses like property casualty, so that almost doubled for us this year. Um, and that's just because of the new facilities. Payroll cost is a little different, but that's probably for subs and vacant positions. Um, and everything, you know, shifts based on this. So, um, this is just a, a good tool for us to research and, you know, an analytical piece for us to look into. Uh, but overall, it's, it's consistent with spending patterns. And it's just, like I said, a good piece for us to look at.
That's good.
The next slide is the athletics fund. Uh, we have a cash flow of $100,692 compared to $170,000 last year. It's not a surprise due to current operations. Uh, but Ms. Little is doing everything she can to increase revenue at the stadium. Um, but she is limited. With playoff games going on, she's trying, but she is limited due to COVID restrictions. The food service fund is next. We are continuing to monitor this closely. We have received $33,000 this year compared to $98,000 last year. At 8:31, we did have a fund balance of $55,000. Um, this is a little bit, uh, same kind of operational issue right now with food service.
I will say too, one thing we need to mention about food service is, uh, there are many days that we are running short-staffed in kitchens. And so I want to make sure that I bring that to your attention because we'll have a contract that will come before us. And that creates a hardship on our campuses. Many principals are jumping in lines, assistant principals are jumping in lines to actually do the serving because they can't stay staffed. So we need to be aware of that in addition to the decrease in funds. So just know that that is a real reality that's happening within our schools. And then parents are not wanting to purchase lunches.
Sure.
Right, because of COVID and preparation and all of those things. But the short-staffed kitchen dynamic is playing a role as well. So hats off to the administrators who are being lunch ladies.
It's because of COVID that they're not?
People don't want, they either, um, obviously, it's very difficult to be a cafeteria worker and live in Prosper ISD, so they're driving from a very far distance. We run into the same dynamic with custodians as well. And so trying to keep those individuals employed is quite a challenge. Um, and obviously, with a company that's struggling like SFE, on top of not having what we need as a district in our lines to serve our students, um, it, it is concerning as a superintendent.
Okay, so the debt service fund is next. Um, we've collected 3.8 million compared to 3.7 million. Um, you, you'll see minimal debt service fees throughout the year, but the major expenditure and this, expenditures in this fund are, um, twice a year, February and August for our large debt service payments. So you don't see any expenditures here yet. The next slides are the capital projects. Um, you saw a little bit of this earlier, elementary school 13, and this is a reminder, this is the latest project, and it is the one on the compressed schedule.
But it's going to be finished.
It's going to be finished.
On time.
On time. Um, the total expenditures for this as of November 30th were 2.9 million, uh, with 1.8 on the contract. The remaining balance for post-construction was 22.8 with a remaining balance of 92.5%. Uh, for elementary school 14, the total expenditure is 10.4, 9.2 on the contract, the remaining balance 13.7 for post-construction, the remaining balance of 60%. And that's it.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Sees?
Very well done.
Great information. Thank you so much, too, for that narrative and kind of background information in each of those areas. That's extremely helpful. Thank you, ladies.
Questions? Board on the financial or investment or tax report through November 2020? Okay, great. Well, that is a item that we must approve. We need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, May. Second. Jana, all in favor? Okay, nice job.
Very good. We do not have any budget amendments, correct, Ms. Fulmer? Just double checking. I know when we talked earlier, we did not. Okay, so we'll skip 7B, no action needed on that. And we have the annual audit for 2019, 2020. And Ms. Fulmer actually is going to take you through, you have a packet in front of you that is the audit information. So she's going to highlight a few things in the audit, audit for you, even though I know you received this electronically in the board packet.
Thank you. So you have your audit, uh, the bound book in front of you. What I would like to do, um, is if you would indulge me just a little bit, and I could just take you through a couple of pages in the audit report. It's 82 pages, it's a very large document, but, um, and it seems like such a simple thing every year to just sort of approve the audit, and it's one and done. But this is the culmination of an enormous amount of work and also an enormous amount of training and continual professional development to understand the new rules from TEA, new guidance from GASB, and all kinds of things that come into this that our auditors also have to stay abreast of so that they can not only provide us guidance on this, but then also audit us and make sure we've been compliant with things. So if you open the cover of your audit report and you go to page four, this is the classic example of your independent auditor's opinion. This is the, um, I'm glad it's in the front of the book. And what it says here, really on paragraph number six, is, um, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects. The financial statements as a whole, this is known as a clean opinion. And so they, I wish they would just come out and just make it easy for people reading the document and say, thumbs up, this was a good, um, audit report. So, um, that's what this is for here. If you turn to page 12 in your book, so you have the statement of net position and the statement of activities. This is a very kind of a quirky governmental type of thing. You have your basic financial reports that you're used to in other businesses, and then governmental, GASB liked to, to shake things up a little bit, and these roll up to government-wide statements. And so that's what you're seeing here on pages 12 and 13. One thing to look at on this one is if you just look to the bottom of Exhibit A1, which is Statement of Net Position, you might go, well, wait a minute, their statement of net position is negative 2.2 million, but we have a fund balance that I'm going to show you in a second that's very robust for our district. How does that add up? What is this statement trying to tell us? We have some things that GASB, and I'm sorry, GASB is an acronym for the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. Um, they're the ones that manage all of the accounting pronouncements for government entities, cities, counties, states, and school districts. So what this is, is these, just the government-wide statement of net position includes some items like the items 2540 and 2545, which is our district's share of the net pension liability, which is teacher retirement system. And so we have to record on our books the pension liability of TRS, but these will never be assigned to us, will not require to ever cut a check or to levy a tax or do anything with this. It's just how they wanted the, um, the financial statements presented. It was derived from other municipalities nationwide, not necessarily Texas, um, maybe, I remember some things in California, that they were not funding their retirements, the police fire EMS, those type of things. That's what GASB was trying to get out here. So it makes our school district statement of net position just look a little, a little clunky. What TEA is going to look at when they see this is they're going to deduct, they're going to add back in the $81 million for those two OPEB liabilities there, 2540 and 2545. There's also $7 million of, um, interest accretion on some, um, debt as well. And so that, they're going to add that back in. So TEA calculates our, our, um, net position at 86.5 million positive. So just wanted to, I know that was a lot of explanation for something. But it really, it's the first thing that you come to, and you're like, wait a second. So, um, were there any questions on that? There are lots of information in the footnotes if you want to know more about OPEB. And OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. If you look at page 14, this is going to look a lot more familiar to everyone. This is a balance sheet. So if we look at our balance sheet, this represents all funds. You have your major component funds, general debt service, our newest bond construction. The other governmental funds are all combined in that one column. You can see the detail by fund in the supplementary statements deeper in the report. If we look at column 10 for the general fund, we're going to see our fund balance there is a total of 114 million, 241, 638. We also see the assignment of construction of 50 million, which the board approved last month, and the 510 and the 48 of unassigned fund balance. There is, um, one thing to notice here, there is no OPEB on this balance sheet. This is more traditionally what our school district, our results of operations would be. The other stuff is just on those government-wide statements. We turn the page to page 18. This is a long name for your income statement, our statement of revenues. This is a long name for your income statement, our Statement of Revenues, Expenditures, and Changes in Fund Balance. Again, you have your same funds across the top. If we look at the very bottom of this one, going down to line twelve hundred, net change in fund balance, results of operations, we increased fund balance last year by fourteen point seven million. Our adopted budget, which is also you're going to see in one of these statements as well, was seven million dollars originally. Our extreme fast growth really propped up our revenues and shutting down at the end of the year really helped those expenditures. So we do like to, you know, under-promise and over-deliver. I just want to make sure that we know that this one won't be replicated anytime soon.
Right.
The next one is if you turn to page forty-nine. This schedule here is required by TEA. This is the budget and actual expenditure side by side of the general fund. Here you can always see the original adopted budget by the Board of Trustees and the final amended budget. As you see here, we started out with a seven point two. The amended budget was a balanced budget because of the surplus that we had. And you can also see here in the next column how we got to the additional fourteen point seven million that ended up in the fund balance. This is a very good, Exhibit G one is always good to see, how did we start last year and how do we end up? Page seventy-four is the next stop and we are almost done. Really wanted to point out, this is the federal awards section. The federal awards, Prosper does not receive a ton of federal money. We don't have a lot of things, but we qualify for a lot of federal funds. We have need, but we don't qualify for a lot of it. However, the same requirements for all the federal funds, and they are voluminous. The auditors have to audit a substantial number of transactions for your federal funds every single year. So I just want to point out, this is the Report on Internal Controls for Financial Reporting. Very important. This can affect our first report among other things. And so at the bottom of this one, we do not identify any deficiencies in internal control, and there are no instances of non-compliance or other matters. We go on to the next page. This report is a report on compliance on major federal programs and also on internal control. So again, embedded in this one is also, the audit provides a reasonable basis for our opinion on compliance, and we have complied in all material respects with everything that's required of the federal programs. They also, on the next page, did not identify any deficiencies in internal control over compliance. So these two reports are hidden at the back. They are extremely important. If there were anything that maybe the auditors thought, you have a finding here, it's not enough to give you not a clean opinion, but things that we need to fix, this is where they would contain that information. And again, on the next page, on page seventy-eight, down the middle, you can see the audity does qualify as a low-risk audity. That's a federal mandate that they have to say, if we have anything that we haven't complied with anything, even though it might have been in good faith, we might be classified as a high-risk audity, and then for three years subsequent, they have to do additional work. But we are a low-risk audity. This is all good news to us. And that concludes the presentation of the audit report.
Very good.
Thank you, Ms. Fulmer. That was extremely helpful.
Any comments or questions on the audit? Yeah, we talked today about, I was trading text with Mays, about getting the Finance Committee to come in every year. So next year when we do this, we'll spend more time with the Finance Committee going through this in more detail, so we don't have to go through it so quickly at the board level. But that was a very good overview.
Thank you.
Grateful for that.
So during the year, is there any type of, I mean, who's in control of internal audit? Like, is that something, you have a schedule of reviewing particular controls or procedures? Or do we use anybody from the outside or?
We don't use anybody from the outside right now. We have, I've done that in the past where I brought in some people to do disengagements where they would just sort of, maybe even you just call it a review. Just you look at their processes, you have a checklist. What we're doing right now, that we're kind of got some more staff in our office, is rewriting our business procedures manual so that we have a good framework for that. We also have, one of the benefits of the way Prosper does business is our activity funds are centralized, because that's a lot of the component of where things can just kind of get a little interesting, is that they get the campus level. The centralized activity funds means we see every transaction because we write all the checks for the activity funds, and then all the deposits are brought up and audited weekly. So that doesn't mean that the form, the compliance at the campus is very important. The fundraising, those kinds of things still need to be audited, but it lowers our risk substantially the way they had it set up before I even got here. They have a very good system. So one thing that we would like to add is something for the campus secretaries where we actually go out, you sit with them, you look at their processes and you go, you know what, this is really great, but I'd like to see two signatures on this. We'd like to make sure you have a copy here and those kinds of things. And so we're looking to add those processes.
Ms. Sees and Ms. Fulmer, we had a conversation probably a couple months ago where we were talking about even doing our light job, people within the business office for them to sit and say, okay, how do you go about processing this requisition, this request? And so they've done a great job of meeting with those individuals to say, hey, let's get more efficient, because there were differences in the ways in which they were doing things. So it was, it was very helpful to be able to see because then they were able to provide leadership and suggestions to their own team and to see really what's happening at that ground level, whether they're sitting with payroll or they're sitting with someone directly in the business office. So it's, it's been very helpful to, it's interesting because it's very similar to what we do in the teaching world. It's called a PLC in the teaching world. And so what are you doing that's working best for kids? So they're doing the same thing in the business office to say, what are you doing that's working best for business in Prosper ISD?
Thank you for that reminder. That was, I actually had so much fun this year, literally sitting down with each of our payroll clerks individually, and the topic was just teach me, teach me what you do, show me what you do today, how do you get your work done? And I learned so much from those ladies. It was, it was brilliant.
Great. That answer your question? Okay, good. Any other comments or thoughts? Okay. Otherwise, we need a action and approval for the twenty nineteen, twenty-twenty annual audit.
I'll make a motion.
All right, Deborah, thank you. Motion? Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mays. All in favor? Good. Very good. Thank you. Very nice job.
Yes, thank you. So next up is consideration and possible action on approval of wired and wireless network access control. And Mr. Dave Alasko, if you have any questions, can help fill in this narrative. Here is his actual agenda transmittal that you all saw previously with Cisco. So this is replacing our existing solution for a three-year term.
Seems like a good deal.
He's not giving up.
That's a pretty easy one, if I understand it correctly anyway.
I will not be presenting it if it's not.
Well played.
We actually stumbled on this one with a three-year, which is even a better deal than we expected. So it's a good opportunity for us. It will coincide with other Cisco products we have, so it will align nicely in the timeframe. So yes, for a three-year is good.
That's good.
Yes.
Okay.
Compared with the one year we currently have with other products.
Okay, that is item seven D. I guess that's seven D, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, Jana, we beat you.
For three years, eleven.
I'll second.
Okay, second by Bill. All in favor? Okay, there you go.
Okay, let's move on to seven E.
More network stuff.
Yes, that's why he's staying.
I know.
Not moving. So this is for our Elementary thirteen and fourteen for our network.
During the last board meeting, we approved, you approved computers, Chromebooks, and other miscellaneous equipment. And this is the final part to operate Elementary thirteen and fourteen, is the network equipment that will connect the schools to the entire network and all the components to make everything work inside of the school.
Walk us through again how you go through that process for, even on something like this one, on how did you, how did you pick, or is this just the approval of the funds?
Well, this is very unique because we will apply for federal funding. We have to follow every single step and procedure that they throw at us. We have a consultant that helps us during the process. We have a very stringent process for bidding. We have to document everything, even the point when, hey, we don't want this. Why? There is a reason for that. So we really document everything just in case we're ever audited. We have from the paper copies to the digital copies to every single point that we're okay to everybody, why, the rhyme and the reason. Because again, we will eventually turn this around, present it, and hopefully get forty percent back of all that.
Very good. Okay.
That's what we do.
Item seven E, needs a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mays. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Deborah. All in favor? All right, approved. Thank you.
Okay, so we need action on the consideration. It's hard to believe because we just had a board election, but we have place four and seven. Thank you, COVID, for rearranging our election season for us. So our election will actually be held on May first, and that is for place four and place seven.
All right, we get a motion for seven F?
I'll make a motion for seven F.
Thank you, Deborah. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jana. All in favor? Okay.
Good. And next up is an interlocal agreement between Prosper ISD, the Town of Prosper, and Windsong. We're actually going to have a shared park at Mrs. Jerry Bryant Elementary, very similar to what we've seen at St. Baker Elementary, Windsong Elementary. Dr. Bradley is standing over by the podium.
I'm just here to answer any questions.
Okay.
That's all. I think this benefits the district, the town, and the developer.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mays. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Bill. All in favor? All right, very good. Thank you.
Okay, so now we have Mr. Doug Witt.
Star of the show.
Save the best for last, Doug.
Y'all had a long agenda tonight.
We have.
It's good to be back. I appreciate the opportunity. I think we have good news. We are proceeding forward. Oh, thank you. Yeah, last time they handed this to me, it was kind of a train wreck up here, I think.
We don't remember. That was Dr. Watkins that did that to you out there.
Anytime someone hands me technology, then everyone just freezes for just a moment.
We're counting on big improvement.
We have a bond program update and authorization to proceed with the next issuance of bonds. So the first slide here is the Bond Buyers Index Municipal Bonds. And you can see here on the bottom right of the graph, you'll see a two point one three percent. This is a national index. It's tracked weekly. It's a modern history of interest rates. The bottom left corner is January of two thousand and one. And to summarize it, our low is at two percent, our high is at six percent, our average runs across the middle in blue at four percent, and we're down at the two percent level. So coming out of post-COVID, there's no real good things about COVID other than low borrowing rates. That's the simple thing that we can talk about here. So to the extent that we continue with the issuance of bonds, we are looking at very, very low interest rates on our upcoming installments. You may recall that we just implemented a bond refunding program to take advantage of these. It saved money, and that money leads to bond capacity. So in the next slide, this kind of recaps our authorized but unissued bonds. In two thousand and seven, the voters approved seven hundred and ten million. The first installment was in two thousand and eight to build a high school. Following that, there was a pretty slow period in there through fourteen to sixteen, and then it ramped up just as the district ramped up. You sold a hundred and twenty-five million in two thousand and seventeen, two hundred million in eighteen, two hundred million in nineteen. And then we get into the two thousand and nineteen bond election, which was for a billion three. We issued another hundred million in the latter part of two thousand and nineteen. It's the first installment of that particular authorization. And then in two thousand and twenty, we did a small issue, fifty-five million. We would not be having this conversation today back in March and April. In fact, we had blood pressure meetings back in March and April. But we come out on the other end with very low interest rates. Your taxable value continues to grow. Your INS budget is in good shape. And so the question becomes, how can we keep up with this growth by issuing bonds to build the facilities, some of which were on the screen today? But today, we're looking at a plan of finance that kind of takes us through the items that you see on the slide. There's the technology, capital, and infrastructure. Land purchase is an ongoing concern for this district. And then you see the Elementary Schools thirteen and fourteen, which are underway, and then fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. This plan kind of takes us through those. The far right column is the opening dates, August of twenty-two for thirteen and fourteen, and then one per year currently scheduled in twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. You are embarking on Middle School number five and High School number three, which are big-ticket items. It's a three-year process with which to start and finish. And this bond program also is a three-year process to supplement the construction fund with bond proceeds to fulfill those contracts for construction. And again, to the far right, you're looking at two thousand and twenty-four for Middle School number five and High School number three. The amounts are shown there. There's four hundred and ninety-six million that's shown on this page. Ten million is coming from a general fund surplus, and we've allocated that to the technology, capital, and infrastructure. As Ms. Fulmer pointed out, your budget will not always allow you to do those types of items, but when you have that type of windfall and we can direct it to those items, that's advantageous for our bond program. So land purchase and then the elementary schools, those are approximations, as you can tell, in round numbers, move down the line, and those are to be funded with bonds. We did sell fifty-five million back in the fall. We purposefully did not go with a big installment to see how we come out on the other end. And so some of that money is still in the construction fund, so there's about thirty-six million of prior bond proceeds. So that leaves four hundred and fifty million out of the billion three that was approved. A hundred and fifty-five million has been sold. So four hundred and fifty million is the planned issuance over the next three years to fund those facility improvements that are on the page there. You did have a demographic study that preceded this. You still are on track. It's an amazing story to me to see what that type of demographic study shows. It's actually accelerating rather than decelerating in a post-pandemic, which is a fascinating story in and of itself.
For you.
Academic exercise.
So on to the next slide. In order to issue bonds, of course, we have to have an ability to finance those bonds, and that's driven in this district by your net taxable value. So statistically, back in two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, the taxable value in this district was three point eight billion. Just five years later, you're at roughly eleven billion. That is, as you well know, massive, massive accelerated growth. The five-year average was a billion four fifty. That's the second bullet. You do have some variance. The high was a billion seven over the last five years, and the low was a billion one. So when we look at models that project out, we have to deal with sometimes in my business, conservative, worst-case scenario, what happens. Whereas on the building side and the construction side, you've got to get those buildings done as soon as possible to house the kids. So there is always a diverging set of analysis that goes into the process. So with that, your two thousand and twenty, twenty-one taxable value growth was a billion two. So just remember these numbers because they'll come into play here momentarily in the presentation. A billion one, kind of low level in the past five years, a billion seven, high level, a billion two this year, and a five-year average of a billion four fifty. The INS fund balance is very healthy. In two thousand and sixteen, the audit was three and a half million. You now have approximately twelve and a half million. I haven't seen the number, but I'm estimating it twelve and a half million. Your current principal and interest on your bonds is fifty-six million, so that's about twenty-two and a half percent. That's more than enough in this type of district. So we will have use of INS fund balance as a part of the game plan, and it may fluctuate between the three million and the twelve million number, but that, that money is there for bond issuance, for bond capacity, for dealing with fluctuations in your tax base, and it's very healthy. So the plan of finance to coincide with the construction plan is authorization potentially tonight for fifty million of additional bonds. And you can think of that fifty million as in addition to the hundred million that you sold, plus the fifty-five million, plus this fifty million. That's about a two hundred million dollar sale, which tracks to the prior two years where we were selling at two hundred million per year. And then we go into later in August, a hundred and fifty million planned installment. August is the beginning, the end of the fiscal year, beginning of a new one. It's also the timeframe under which we get certified values. So it does make sense to have issuances in August. And so we have a plan of a hundred and fifty million. And so we have a plan of 150 million, followed by 150 million, followed by 100 million. That will be the 450 million that concludes those projects that we have on there, plus the 10 million from the general fund surplus, plus the remaining bond proceeds of the 55 million. So we are at 50 cents, we will stay at 50 cents, we have to prove up the ability to stay at 50 cents. It does require what's called a methodology called pledge of tier-one funds. We have no intention of using those funds, but unfortunately, when we have to prove it up to the state, they take today's taxable value with today's issuance, even though we know next year we're going to have a bigger value. So they underestimate it, so we say, okay, we can pledge tier-one funds to make up the difference, knowing that we don't have any intention to utilize those funds. The amortization length is 30 years for each installment. We have done fixed-rate bonds here in the district, and the 100 million that was split into two $50 million installments, we used a soft-put variable rate bond. That is a technique that is important for a district of this size with this amount of bonds to issue and this amount of bond issuance. So that will be employed at some point through this time period. The first 50 million is planned to be another fixed-rate sale and issuance of that bond. Use of INS fund balance as necessary, and then the taxable value growth at the bottom of this slide, as I mentioned before, we'll need about $4.8 billion of growth in order to fund the additional 450 million. So how long will it take to get 4.8 billion? That's anyone's guess. But at a billion two per year, that'd be four years, that'll be one more fiscal year after the last sale, so we'd be kind of behind the game, so to speak. And at billion six, we're right on schedule, three years of debt issuance, three years of growth, and we just move along. We do use conservative interest rates in the model before you sell the bonds, and so at the end of the day, I think the hope and goal is, is that that 100 million, we're talking about something more accelerated from that time period going forward. Here's what it looks like on graph, it looks like a coral snake, but you can see there, the first scenario there, the billion-two growth, you can see the yellow, last issuance of the 100 million would take two years of growth to get there, if we grow at a billion two per year. You're growing at about a billion dollars in just home values, not including any commercial, to put it into perspective. So that's what it would look like in this case, we would have to slow down, you would be wanting number 18 and number six and number four sooner than we could get there under this model, but that's okay. And then this model here, the billion-six growth per three years, you actually are right on schedule, three years of issuance, three years of growth, and then we're talking about what the next three years look like, how many facilities that you need, what's the outlook for the taxable value, and so forth. So that is the plan. Is there any worst-case scenario? Sure, I mean, we could get two years into this and something happens to the overall plan. We are embarking on middle school number five and high school number three, and you can't start and stop those. They get started and they roll, so we're going to have to roll with it, no matter what happens into the future. But there is a lot of reason, including demographic studies and otherwise, to point to the fact that you are on a trend that is very likely to continue. The last is the preliminary schedule of events. We began this process, another blood pressure meeting on November 4th with the staff to talk about how we get from point A to point B, because we have kids coming in.
I agree with you, I couldn't breathe.
So we went through that, and then we presented this in detail to the Finance Committee on December 4th. We're looking for your approval tonight to adopt an order authorizing the issuance of just the 50 million, the next installment. And we'll come back to you when we need to sell additional bonds in August of each year unless we change that timeframe. And then we'll get the Permanent School Fund letter here in December. We'll go through the due diligence process, the rating reviews, the preparation to enter the securities market in early January, and we'll be locking in interest rates in mid to late January, and the closing would be in February, the middle of February. So we would then replenish the construction fund at that time, and we do not anticipate a need to draw on the general fund, waiting for bond proceeds at this time. So we do not have the resolution allowing for reimbursement on your agenda at this time.
Good, okay. Any questions for Doug? Thank you, Doug. We did have a Finance Committee meeting, that's May, May's Kelly is on that, so we went through this in a lot of detail.
Do you think this makes your eyes blink or nothing?
Lots of charts.
But we thought it was important to go, I thought the one chart where we'd show the specific projects we have and how much they are was important, because, you know, we always look at how many schools can we afford, basically? And so that gave us a good picture of it, and I think, again, we all felt a lot better after this meeting.
That's right.
We can actually build what we need to, but we're not going to be way ahead. I mean, we're just kind of keeping up. But, you know, as he said, you know, something could go wrong, but we should be able to build these. Now, this is separate from being able to operate the schools.
Right, right.
Frisco has had a case in the past where they built a school and they couldn't afford the staff. So that doesn't mean that couldn't happen, this is not what we talked about here, this is issuing bonds to build the school.
Yeah, and I like the way, and what we talked about also is that many people think a building starts getting built and then it's done within a year. And these projects, you can see, especially middle school, high school, you're looking at three years, and you all may have noticed, but that 2024, we're going to go through, again, what I refer to as the trifecta year, when you get an elementary, a middle, and a high, just like what we did. And to Mr. Davenport's point, the personnel expense is huge when you open an elementary, middle, and high all in the same year. But I really appreciate everything that Mr. Witt has done, the sub-finance committee, just really trying to figure out, how do we be really great stewards of our funds and really exhaust every penny that we have to get these buildings built for our students and Prosper ISD? So thank you.
That's great. Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Witt. That is item seven eight, where we will take action to adopt an order authorizing the issuance of school-building bonds, establishing the parameters for the bonds, and delegating authority to the administration, item seven H.
Yeah, this is just the 50 million.
50 million, that's right.
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
May's makes a motion, second? Second bill, all in favor?
Thank you very much, y'all enjoy the holidays, educators are on the front line. I hear about medical workers, they definitely are on the front line, but educators are, y'all have a well-deserved holiday in front of y'all, if you enjoy it.
Thank you.
Great job.
Okay, and that will take us to executive session.
Yes, we have a motion for executive session. Bill, second, Deborah, all in favor? We will go into executive session, we will do the things we do in the executive session, and we will come out and vote on any public items that come out of that. You're welcome to stick around, as always, should you so choose. Thanks, everybody. Merry Christmas.
Okay, we're back. We have agenda item 8A, consideration of possible action on approval of any professional contract personnel to be employed. We have a list of those people.
Yes, they're in your packet.
Any comments or questions about those people? I know I've seen their list, their names. Okay, I have a motion to approve the hires.
I'll make a motion to approve the hires.
Okay, thank you, Deborah. Second. Gianna, all in favor? Okay, and we also need a motion for the approval of the resignations.
Make a motion.
All right, two in row, all in favor? Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion, second. Third. All in favor? Buenas noches.
Excellent.